This is you.
Come this.
This, when this bill comes up, this needs to be mentioned. When this bill comes up, this needs to be mentioned.
Okay.
About to several council members, somebody will make a motion to amend this.
Okay.
And this also needs to be mentioned.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Because she toppled the last one.
Yeah, remind me, Scott, you're gonna be at that meeting next week, right? We have that meeting.
They told me about the court authority thing.
Huh?
They've got the court authority open.
Sure.
At what time? Ah, well, this was kinda your thing, man. Whenever you, what?
Like 7:30?
I think we're, I think we're ready.
Yeah, we're ready, yeah. Who's, do we don't, do we have a pastor?
I'm doing it.
Okay.
Is this ours?
Dave, you do the pledge of allegiance, alright? Alright?
I tell people to check the website, too.
Hey. You saved my.
Hi.
Would you seriously want to work?
In there.
Here's next. I need something.
What's the nearest turn?
You're staying?
Are we at the same?
Where you going?
The road?
Yeah. What, what?
I guess I'm gonna get those connections.
Do you want?
Yeah, they did.
I can have a list of all the. When's it start, Dave? When do we start the meeting?
Now.
Does it, does it, does it?
No, you gotta, as soon as you hit the gavel.
Are we ready to get started, guys?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for coming to our council meeting tonight. We'll start with an invocation by Mike Ehlum, and then David Hammond will leave us in the pledge of allegiance. Please, please rise.
Just power heads and pray. Father, we just pause for a moment to commend this meeting into your hands. We ask you for the wisdom that you can provide and the patience that you provide, and as Stephen Covey used to always say, seek first to understand before we seek to be understood. So, Father, I just praise that wisdom will be prevalent at this meeting tonight, and I thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy and our opportunity to come here and assemble together for the good of our community. We thank you for the things you're going to do for our community in the future, starting tonight, and we praise you in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilman Cronin.
Here.
Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Ehlum.
Here.
Councilman White. Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Okay, we'll move on to conditional use permits. Bills for final passage, Bill number 4771.
Bill number 4771, in ordinance granting conditional use permit CUR 19-05B for automobile and truck sales to Golden B.C. LLC property owner and Benson Automotive Properties applicant.
Bill number 4771 has corrected set of minutes, revised maps, and Exhibit C has been timely received. The bill is ready for final vote. Are there any questions from, from the council, or how, which way you go, Donna? Huh? Any questions, any comments or questions from the council?
I still have not seen a, a traffic study for this or any comments from MoDOT, okay? I did drive out to that road this past week and talked to Mr. Greifse as well, and that is a MoDOT road. So, as such, we can't prohibit tractor-trailer parking on it through county. And also, just a few hundred yards west of the proposed dealership, the roadway already goes to four lanes, so that kinda tells me that, that eventually that service road needs to go to four lanes. When I was a city alderman, county sent us a letter and asked us if we had any proposed developments along county roadways to please get dedication for widening of the road so the county could save some costs additionally down the road. I think we kinda need to practice what we preach here, and if we're gonna approve this, I think we should get some additional dedication along that outer road for, for MoDOT so that when that, when that road needs to be widened, it'll make it much, much easier and less costly for MoDOT to do so. And that's the only comments I have.
Dave, you have any comments?
I have a couple of comments. I just handed out a list to the council members, and when you talk about do as you say and it's to do as, you know, say as I do, sort of thing. O'Fallon, they're talking about stick to the zoning on a technological corridor. If you look at this list, there's 25 maybe on here that were zoned other than technological on, through O'Fallon. And so, to me, I just don't think this is fair to the petitioner. I don't think it's fair to the, to the, the people who are trying to sell the property. They have land rights, they've had it listed for five years. I don't understand the position of the subdivision that lives behind there because as the, as it was testified last meeting, the MasterCard put in, crammed in a 400 space parking lot. A car lot is gonna, what is it, gonna get 50 customers a day at best? I mean, even that would seem like a lot of customers. So, to me, the traffic on this scenario would be a lot less than any other scenario. If they made it a car, a car lot for, or a parking lot for MasterCard, you're talking hundreds of cars, hundreds of traffic every single day. So, to me, this is a low impact for this subdivision, so I'm, I'm in favor for all the reasons I described, so.
Yeah, Terry.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, the last meeting, we, you know, we, this, we run across this all the time. People testify that this is not a good use because this, whatever business we're talking about just can't make it. Well, we on this council, we're, we're not in the, in the business of, of looking through a crystal ball and finding out what businesses can make it or cannot make it. That's, that's what free enterprise and capitalism's all about. Our job is to say, is this a suitable usage for that land, which, which I, I believe it is. So, you know, I, I just don't think that we can say, well, this is gonna make it, this is not gonna make it. That's, that's, that's not our, you know, part of our role here on the council.
We, yeah, Mr. Cronin?
Just to be clear, okay? I kind of, I've always kinda disagreed with the high-tech, you know, verbiage in some zoning, and I don't have an issue with this being zoned commercial. I mean, in my opinion, my, my GMC truck is more high-tech than the MasterCard I carry in my wallet, okay? So, I don't know about that high-tech argument, but I can tell you this, any other project I think we've looked at, we've always seen some type of traffic study, or we've seen some type of letter from MoDOT stating there's no issues with the access to their road. And, and also, quite often, we've also asked for, it's very commonplace with every city in this county, to ask for a strip of property along a development to encounter, to, to, basically to make it easier to expand the roadway as a, as a result of that increased traffic from that business. We're doing none of that here. There's no traffic study that I've seen. We haven't tried to help MoDOT in securing right-of-way to make that road wider down the road, okay? And that's my concerns with it. It's not anything to do with the, the high-tech corridor, it really hasn't anything to do. I think that dealership's gonna have a struggle there, but I still, that's their business to sink or swim at that point in time. And I don't think the residents, I think they're pretty well protected with that berm. But the traffic situation and the parking of semis is still an issue, and on that site plan, there is not a single place for a semi to park. It's nothing but passenger car parking. And if you, and when those, when those truck drivers come in from whatever assembly plant they're coming, and they can't find a place to park in that dealership, they're gonna park on that outer road, and then you got a potential safety issue in that outer road. Maybe it's not a potential, potential safety issue, but I'd like MoDOT to tell me if it is or not before I vote on this.
I can tell you this, Mr. Cronin, I, I travel that road quite a bit, usually at rush hours so I can avoid Highway K because it's, the traffic isn't nearly as bad, and, and I've never had a problem with the traffic along that section, and that's in the evening. I've never, never been down it in the morning time, but at evening rush hour, that, that road is not that, there's not that many cars on it. There's not any congestion on that road.
I know.
Can I ask Robert a question real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry to do this to you, man. So, just so we're clear on what we're approving tonight, the first part that we're approving is, this is talking about rezoning. Let's just assume that this passes. Before they start turning dirt, what else do they have to do?
There's a number of permits that we need to apply for, excuse me, apply for, including a land disturbance permit, a site plan, and there's two times at which potentially a reserve strip for road widening is typically acquired on behalf of the county. One is during plating process for subdivision plat, or a second during the site plan process. And so, what could trigger that would be if the, if the Director of the Highway Department or the Director of Development Review Division, either one of them requires a traffic study or that can take place at that time.
So, I started to say, I just wanted to be sure, speak from a position of knowledge, right? So, if this gets approved tonight on the rezoning aspect of it, to Mr. Cronin's concerns, we could go back and make that as part of our plans later on to say, hey, we don't want this to obstruct the north outer road at any time, so we can keep at least those two lanes open, correct?
That's correct. An example of this would be, I remember on Salt River Road where there was a large tractor-trailer facility parking lot there, and so, at the time of site plan review, I recall there was a traffic study required, and they had to put in a turn lane at that location.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. To your point, and to what Dave's saying, I drove this road every day. I drive it going to work and I drive it coming home from work because I don't wanna deal with the traffic down on Highway K either. The traffic flows pretty well right there. However, I deal with a lot of car dealers, and I understand what those car haulers are gonna do, and I don't want them shutting down the road there. So, as long as we have an opportunity to go back down the road and say, I'll approve this from a rezoning standpoint, with the exception that when we start, between now and when they start turning dirt, we get a second bite at the apple to be able to put that as part of the conditions to lay that lane in there.
We don't have jurisdiction over that road, that's a MoDOT road.
We have jurisdiction over the land, though. So, I'm not talking about on the road. I'm saying, as Robert just stated, we can say as part of the site plan that we make them set across an area where they have to put a designated loading and unloading zone on there so they can't block the highway.
But we cannot post the highway, so they can still park there.
No, actually, actually not true, Mr. Cronin.
That's according to John Greifse.
Well, we've had instances, where's John, is he not here? Or Craig, is he here? We've had instances on the, on the lettered highways that we, we reduce the speed in cooperation, we make recommendations to MoDOT, and they reduce the speeds, and so, they'll, why wouldn't they do?
Make a recommendation, but it's MoDOT's decision.
Yeah, but if we, if, if it goes through the proper channels, through, through the, the public hearings that we have on traffic regulations, then there would be no reason why someone couldn't apply for no, no parking on, in, in that area. And it would have to go through that process, but MoDOT's gonna, why would they buck it? You know? Anyway, that's, that's my thought. Any other council members? Okay.
I'd like to ask, is, now, is this, what kind of vote is needed for this to, for?
For on the CUP.
On the CUP part of it.
Five on the rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Donna. Are we done, everyone? Okay.
Bill number 4771, in ordinance granting conditional use permit CUR 19-05B for automobile and truck sales to Golden B.C. LLC property owner and Benson Automotive Properties applicant. Councilman Cronin.
No.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
CUP 4771 has passed, and now we are moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Arne Deenhoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenhoff. I'm a county and state public advocate and also a resident. At the last meeting, your remarks, Mr. Brazel, were very unprofessional, very uncanny, and not the truth. You libeled and you slandered me. My comments in my speeches are 100% true, 100% accurate, or I don't open up my mouth of what I'm speaking about. It's none like, none of you like the truth, and none of you like the full truth with facts to back it up. I will always speak the truth that you can bank on, and if you disagree with me, I ask you to take me to county circuit court or federal district court and challenge my facts. Corruption, fraud, and discrimination in St. Charles County will cease and come to a halt. Hiding court documents and court cases of Steve Elman's son, William Elman, in a drug case will halt. The cases of the county prosecutor's divorce and Aaron Burleson, a circuit, Associate Circuit Judge, will halt. Those were done illegally to close them, and special treatment for elected officials over the rest of the 440,000 good residents of St. Charles County. Now, last week, when Mr. Brazel was out in the hallway, there was a, a problem, and there, he made some threats, and there was an undercover detective SWAT operator, Patrick C. Stikes, who did not ever, and I'm, I'm saying, he was barking orders without clearly and legally identifying himself as a police officer, never showed any proper credentials to comply with state law. And then he went into the restroom, was trying to broker a deal with Mr. Brazel to try to trump up some charges that just weren't true. Mr. Brazel, you have libeled and slandered me at last county council meeting, and I will take action in either state court or federal district court. I have not, as you told the audience and our county residents, have never been convicted of zero felonies, zero misdemeanors, zero traffic tickets, and zero Missouri ethics violations. I would not be allowed to run for public office if I did any of these improper or wrong activities at the state, county, and local levels. I'm asking for an official apology from you, Mr. Brazel, or I will sue you personally in St. Charles County as a whole. Now, Mr. Brazel, as I said at the last meeting, you killed another human being in fluorescent and were never charged. You ran over a human being in a dump truck. There was an arrest warrant that was put out by the City of St. Peters Police Department in which you were arrested. You get, you have a contract, an exclusive contract through cooperating school districts, Ed Plus is a sales executive for roofing bids, taking millions away from taxpayers in the region without a fair bid.
Your time is up, Mr. Deenhoff.
And you have a county police vehicle.
Your time is up, thank you.
And I'll be at the next meeting to continue.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please sit down.
Mike Snowden.
Good evening. My name's Mike Snowden. I'm the city administrator for the City of O'Fallon, and I'm here tonight to speak briefly about Bill 4772, which is the rezoning of the property at 2150 Technology. You did just pass the conditional use permit, however, the rezoning will be before you later in this agenda. The City of O'Fallon, the city council, has created a remonstrance against this, and that should be in your packet tonight. Just giving you a couple of quick items, I'll be as brief as possible. The City of O'Fallon has three car dealerships in its municipal boundaries right now. Frankly, the Honda, Trenery Chevrolet, and Lufus has a Dodge and Jeep dealership on Highway K. The smallest of those three is 13.88 acres. The largest is 14.29 acres. The City of O'Fallon just does not believe that this site is proper for a car lot. I'll leave it at that. We agree with Mr. Cronin that a traffic study needs to be done, and in fact, because there is a large project for Highway DD and I-64 that's starting next spring, that MoDOT and the county road board have contributed quite a bit of money to, we believe that it would be actually beneficial for this site if it does go through as a car dealership to contribute to that work as well. The City of O'Fallon is in preparation to speak to all of the businesses in that vicinity to talk about contributing to a shortfall in the funding that exists currently. Dynaflex, which is a high-tech company, is coming in, Catty Corner and across the highway and up at Hawk Ridge and the outer road. They have 110 employees today, they're gonna ramp up to 140 employees before they even have broken ground, they're already planning their first expansion. So, we know that high-tech exists, we know that high-tech is available in that area. The county's plan does call for this to be high-tech. We understand that it is a small parcel for a high-tech business on its own. However, MasterCard with over 4,000 employees is immediately behind this site. It has various suppliers like Tech Mahindra that does the IT work for MasterCard, and they just moved into leased space just north of Wing Haven, and we expect that they're going to be looking for their own building in the near future, and by that I mean in the next two to three years. We don't know that for certain, but we believe that that's something that they would be interested in. So, while we understand that we cannot tell a business how to do their business, we just don't believe this is the highest and best use for that site, and we would appreciate you considering that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else, Claire?
It's all the speaker cards.
All right, that concludes public comments. Now, we'll move to your oral report from the county executive. Okay, thank you, Steve. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, let's see, one, one opposition. Now, we'll move on to, I just removed from the consent agenda. There are none bills for final passage. Oh, hold on a second, am I supposed to do? Bill number 472 has corrected minutes and revised maps, requires amendment, motion to be, motion to amend Bill number 4772, and the last, whereas, striking the last, the last sentence and adding.
Yeah. Introduce the bill.
I was waiting for it to read.
Amended Bill number 4, 4772, in ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E Single Family Residential District and R1A Single Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District as per application CUR 19-05A.
Mr. Chair. Bill number 4772 has corrected minutes and revised maps and requires an amendment, motion to amend Bill number 4772, and the last whereas, strike the last sentence and add.
Okay, so one second.
Oh, we need to read the wording that's being, so we're striking the last sentence. A simple majority of county councils require for the passage of this bill, and we are adding the City of O'Fallon has submitted a written protest, legal remonstrance against the proposed subject rezoning action pursuant to section 405.535.B.3 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO. Therefore, the supermajority vote of five of the total of seven council members is required to pass this bill.
One second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Any other comments or questions on Bill 4772?
I would, just to say to Mr. Snowden, of the highest and best use of this property, I agree. I don't think this is the highest and best use of this property at all. I think there are probably better alternatives of what this piece of property could be used for, but I would also say to the property owners' rights, they've been looking for five years and nobody's said anything yet. And I talked to the Realtor to go, really? And there's, that's kinda where they are. I mean, I know they would have preferred to have, have somebody like Mahindra come in and take this property, but they have an offer on the table, and kind of what Mr. Hollander said earlier, we don't always get to pick and choose what's gonna go in there, but if you look at what they are trying to put in there, it does fit with the world that we have to play within. So, I agree with you, though, it is not the highest and best use, and I would prefer that car dealership go somewhere else. I don't see how they're gonna sell a lot of cars on eight acres of ground, but like Terry said, that's not within our purview, so just looking at what we have in front of us, I'm afraid we're gonna have a car dealership there. So, I appreciate your point, though.
Is that it? Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, I just point out that if this land, I mean, I'm, I don't know if there was any attempt by the City of O'Fallon to annex this land in the last five years, whereas the question about the land usage would be in front of their, you know, Board of Aldermen rather than us. To my knowledge, I don't think there was any, any attempt to annex the land at any time in the last five years.
Okay, everyone down? Donna or Claire?
Amended Bill number 4772, in ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E Single Family Residential District and R1A Single Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District as per application CUR 19-05A. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
No. Bill 4772 has passed, moving on to Bill 4773.
Bill number 4773, in ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AA Agricultural District with Density Floodway Overlay District to C2 General Commercial District, Density Floodway Overlay District per application RZ 19-11.
Any questions or comments from anybody? Nancy, you got anything? If you guys remember, this biz has been here for a long time, right?
This is, yeah, this is the one that we, that, yeah, that Paul had the huge crowd for our last meeting, and, you know, he didn't feel like he needed his crowd this week, so I rest assured, I think you do. Okay.
They can only come from all around the state for so many times, you know?
No comments, no questions? Okay, Claire.
We just need to say for the record, the minutes.
The record, that has, we have corrected the minutes? Okay.
Bill number 4773, in ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AA Agricultural District with Density Floodway Overlay District to C2 General Commercial District with Density Floodway Overlay District per application 19-11. Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes. Bill 773 has passed, moving on to Bill 4774.
Bill number 4774, in ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from PR Park Recreational District with Floodway Fringe Overlay District to AA Agricultural District with Floodway Fringe Overlay District per application RZ 19-12.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4774?
I just want a comment that Bill number 4, 4774 has corrected minutes.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, any questions, comments, seeing none?
Bill number 4774, in ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from PR Park Recreational District with Floodway Fringe Overlay District to AA Agricultural District with Floodway Fringe Overlay District per application RZ 19-12. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Bill 774 has passed, moving on to Bill 4775.
Bill number 4775, in ordinance authorizing two agreements relating to the St. Charles County's urban community, urban county community development block grant program, or urban county CDBG program for 2017 through 2019, namely, a program administration agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Charles for the city's operation of the urban county's 2019 programs and services, and a subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Charles for the city's operation. Charles County and the City of St. Charles for the city's operation of the city's 2019 programs and services.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4775? Seeing none?
An ord, Bill number 4775, an ordinance authorizing two agreements relating to St. Charles County's urban, urban county community development block grant program, or urban county CDVG program for 2017 through 2019, namely, a program administration agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Charles for the city's operation of the urban county's 2019 program and services, and a subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Charles for the city's operation of the city's 2019 programs and services. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Bill 4775 has passed. Moving on to Bill 4776.
Bill number 4776, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's urban county community development block grant program, or urban county CDVG program for 2017 through 2019, namely, a 2019 subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDVG programs and services.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4776? Seeing none?
Bill number 4776, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's urban county community development block grant program, or urban county CDVG program for 2017 through 2019, namely, a 2019 subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDVG programs and services. Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White? Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Bill 776 has passed. Moving on to Bill 4777.
Bill number 4777, an ordinance approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Committee for the Gateway Greenlight Program, Federal Project CMAQ-5414632.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4777? Seeing none?
Bill number 4777, an ordinance approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Greenlight Program, Federal Project CMAQ-5414632. Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White? Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Bill 777 has passed. Moving on to Bill 4778.
Bill number 4778, an ordinance setting the 2020 rates for group medical insurance benefits with Aetna Life Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and self-insured dental insurance benefits for county employees, elected officials, and retirees.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4778? Yes, Nancy.
It's my understanding that these rates are the same as the previous year. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay. That was the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay. Claire?
Bill number 4778, an ordinance setting the 2020 rates for group medical insurance benefits with Aetna Life Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and self-insured dental insurance benefits for county employees, elected officials, and retirees. Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
4778 has passed. Moving on to Bill 4779.
Bill number 4779, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget adopted by ordinance 18-117 for positions within the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department and Roads and Traffic Division.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill number 4779 with substitute bill number 4779.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The substitute bill has passed.
Bill, substitute bill number 4779, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget adopted by ordinance 18-117 for positions within the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department, Roads and Traffic Division, and Finance Department.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Substitute bill number 4779, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget adopted by ordinance 18-117 for positions within the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department, Roads and Traffic Division, and Finance Department. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill 4779 has passed. Moving on to Bill 4780.
Bill number 4780, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the curators of the University of Missouri regarding the transfer and acceptance of certain roadways and improvements at the Missouri Research Park.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4780? Seeing none?
Bill number 4780, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the curators of the University of Missouri regarding transfer and acceptance of certain roadways and improvements at Missouri Research Park. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White? Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam? Oh, sorry.
Yes, again.
Yes, again.
Bill 4780 has passed. Yes, Mr. Cronin.
I'd like to thank County Councilor John Watson for all his hard work with University of Missouri on this. I know it was a struggle, and I appreciate your efforts, Mr. Watson. So do the residents of this county.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Yeah, thanks, John. Seriously. Okay, moving on to bills for introduction, Bill number 4781.
Bill number 4781, sponsored by the council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended St. Charles County Regional Drug Task Force Agreement for the county's multi-jurisdictional drug task force.
Any questions or comments? Bill 4782.
Bill number 4782, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Michael K. Fagan as an independent contractor.
Any questions on 4782? Seeing none? Go to 4783.
Bill number 4783, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement to allow certain law enforcement agencies to participate and utilize the St. Charles County Police Department Substance Tobacco Alcohol Resistance Training, START, program.
Any questions or comments on 4783?
I just have a question.
Yes, Dave.
Are we charging for this training or?
No. You mean the schools or the other cities? Neither.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes bills for introduction. Moving on to table bills. Are there any table bills to be removed? Okay. Then, do we have any announcements or miscellaneous? Yes, Mr. Cronin.
Prior to Mike Klinghammer's departure, him and I talked quite a bit about passing a ordinance where items of a certain size would be off the consent agenda and be looked at a little closer with a regular bill. I'd like the council to consider that. I think it's a good idea. Mike came from a city background, as do I, and I can tell you, the cities don't approve, like we did tonight, $6 million with purchases without discussion, okay? And while these purchases may be very well valid, there are some discussions we could have had. For instance, what are we going to do when we can't get Chevy Tahos anymore because we're buying the last 10 we can get? And do we really need to spend a quarter million dollars on the doors of this building? And maybe also, why are we, why are we buying a boom truck that's not rated as good as the, another boom truck? Something, stuff like that is our conversations I think this council should be having. And as we approach the budget, and we're going to be spending lots of time on that budget, and knowing, quote Mr. Schnarr, it's going to be an ugly budget, I think it's our duty to take a little closer look at spending down the road. So, if you folks have thoughts and comments about that, I know Mike did some work on it. We met and had lunch and talked about it. It's something that could be done, and we just need to have discussion about what dollar threshold we need to put on it so we don't tie up the consent agenda. Too bad. Thank you.
Mr. Cronin, why don't you make a rough draft and then send it out to council members? And then, I, it's not a bad idea. I mean, I'll co-sponsor, but I'd like to see a draft first. That's usually how we can get it started.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I just, I'm just curious why, if there was any questions about it, why didn't you ask it to be?
I didn't have the opportunity. That's why I voted no to consent agenda. Once you made a motion to approve and it wasn't brought up. Now, typically, just to answer your questions, typically, I try to call county staff to answer these questions ahead of time, but that's a cumbersome process, and I think we owe it to the folks to hear, you know, that we are discussing why we, you know, we spent $6 million tonight. You know, why did we do it and what did we do it for? Maybe every, maybe every purchase is 100% justified. I just think the process of approving things without discussing is something you don't see in city government, and I think we ought to maybe learn a little bit from them, especially when we approach the budget sessions coming up.
I think one thing you have to be in consideration, though, is how, yeah, I guess you'll set the boundaries because we could talk about stuff all night long.
We've got budget coming up. Be a good time to talk about our talking budget.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one, because this has been brought up in, in public comment before about why the county doesn't, why the county gets rid of vehicles when we do. The reason that the county does that is because it's more cost-effective, and we get more money out of the vehicles when we resell them if they don't have 200,000 miles on them. So, we, the program that's, they put together in finance is one that's been used all over the country as far as fleet management, and I, I commend the county's finance on their fleet management, and that's why we do things that the way we do. We don't run cars until they have very, real high expensive repair bills because it's cheaper to go ahead and sell those vehicles at, when we get the most out of them and purchase new. So, I hope that, I hope you understand now why the county fleet management does things the way they do. If you've got any questions about it, I'm sure they'd be glad to explain it to you again, or you can look at what other communities do that have an effective program for, for replacing vehicles.
And add a little bit more to that on the, on the process of selling vehicles with the county, and Mike Hurburg, and he sees me at the auctions about every, we're always down there, and we, it's fun to shop the cars. I always questioned how they did it, but then after you go through the process with the county, realize that it's a real good process because they require sealed bids. They don't have an open auction. If it was an open auction, you'd have an opportunity to really lowball it, but when you have sealed bids, you have people who bid on cars who just want a car. They're not, they're not a dealer. They just want a car, and they're going to pay shelf price for it that way, and it seems to work out well because I'll buy those cars from the county. I bid on them like everybody else, and I, I usually pay more than I should because I don't care, and it's a decent car for driving around in sales, but.
Let me know when you're in the market for a car. I want to sell you a car. I like that car.
Well, they're good cars. They have for, they're four-door sedans, and so the process that they do is very well and very well thought out, and they do a good job, and they get top dollar. And sometimes people spend way too much on them because they don't really know what they're doing, and they bid high, and it, and it works out good for the taxpayers, so it's a good process.
So, two things. One, could I ask Scott Draknick to come up?
Absolutely. Scott.
So, while Scott's on his way, Scott's with St. Charles County Workforce and Business